Well, the meeting in order, roll call, please.
Ms. Bleska, President, Mr. Kaminsky.
Here.
Mr. DeSarno.
Here.
Mayor Morgan.
Here.
Mrs. Joffrey.
Here.
Mr. Cogan.
Here.
Mrs. McNamara.
Here.
Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a public meeting of borough council, Borough of New Providence, County Union, State of New Jersey, how to put notice has been given in accordance with P.O. 1975, Chapter 231, an annual notice where revision was made in accordance with Section 13 of the Act. Okay, we have a presentation, and I see Abigail and Aiden are here, and we have a presentation for food insecurity awareness.
Proclamation.
Proclamation. And Abigail and Aiden started the Link Food Bank over at Methodist Church, how many years ago?
Two.
Yeah, two and a half years.
Two and a half years, and they were actually in high school when they started it, so it's quite a tribute. Whereas food insecurity is like a consistent access to enough food for every person in a household to live an active, healthy life. And it can be temporary or long lasting and affects people across all different races, ages, and income classes in the United States. And whereas in America, about one in 10 people and one in six children are experiencing food insecurity within Uni County alone, over 7.3% of residents who are about 40,000 people are currently food insecure, including a rate of 9.2 for children and about 12,000 people. And whereas thousands of nonprofit organizations and food banks, including the Link Program, Inc., have been set up across the United States with the goal of fighting food insecurity, working tirelessly to provide families with necessary nutritional support because food insecurity is often tied to other major problems like poverty, unemployment, health conditions, and more. It is even harder to put an end to it. However, with the issue growing every day, more must work to be done and raise the awareness about it and fight it head on. Therefore, I am working, Mayor in New Providence, County Union, State of New Jersey, through him, by proclaim the month of October as Food Insecurity Awareness Month in New Providence, New Jersey, and encourage all residents to observe Food Insecurity Awareness Month and support this cause that has so deeply impacts families and communities across our country. I want to thank you guys for doing what you do for our community. And I know there's a lot of people that need help, and it's not something that's out there all the time, and people don't feel comfortable, you know, knowing that, that they're food insecure. And, you know, you guys have provided a great, great program for them, so you should all be proud. Maybe that's what I'm saying.
Just having seen how this program has grown and changed over the last year, this is the heart and the soul of the organization, and their tireless, tireless effort and passion for doing this for our residents, for the people participating in Link is just astounding. I'm very proud to work with them and watch this grow. But before, before we finish, why don't you guys give everybody an update on how they can donate, where they can donate, maybe give us a little status on like monthly, how many families are we feeding? Because unfortunately, we're not decreasing our distribution, we're increasing our distribution. And if you could maybe give everyone a flavor for that.
Yeah, totally. I can give you a kind of a up-to-date stat on where we are in terms of how much we've given over the past two and a half years. Just the other month, we went over 10 tons, so of food, hydropotash, cleaning supplies to all of our families in the past few years, and that is where we've been exponentially increasing as the number of families increases. We now have about 50 families that are in our network, and we have about 30 to 35 that come every month to receive food, hydropotash, and cleaning supplies. They receive between 40 to 60 pounds of food, hydropotash, cleaning supplies, you know, all these necessities that you really require. If you would like to support us, our website is linknji.org. All information about donating food, our whole list of food, hydropotash, cleaning supplies that you can donate, it's all on there, as well as our online donation page. Or if you'd like to donate with a check, you can send it to the Methodist Church at 1441 Springfield Avenue in New Providence. But seriously, we could not do any of this without our community. It's been super supportive and super helpful, and we really are grateful for everything you guys have done for us.
If you'd also like to support, we actually have a program that we started within the whole school district, but we probably have a school fuel program. So those aren't pantries with any actual school buildings. So if you're interested in donating stuff for the school fuel program, you can drop it off directly to the school and label it, or you can just purchase individually packed items, if nuts, without nuts if possible, and drop it off at the United Methodist Church in the back parking lot on the standing shelf.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congrats, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Okay, I need approval minutes of September 10th, please. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
No, so we have correspondence, the Providence Fire Department, David Palatini, and he following his father's footsteps as a volunteer fireman. Okay, New Jersey Transit, notice for senior and disabled residents transportation, Board of Adjustment, 1682 Springfield Avenue. We have two letters from Sabawi and Rajiv Satia, and books I drive about proposed sidewalks. Any comments? Okay, let's go to council business, Lisa Administration.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got Resolution 2024-265. This is a resolution authorizing the Borough of New Providence to apply for a grant under the New Jersey American Bottle Filling Station Grant Program. So this is from New Jersey American Water Company. It's for a $2,500 grant to add another water bottle filling station here at the municipal center, and it is a non-matching grant.
Well, keep on going, Advisory Board.
Advisory. So Resolution 2024-266 is a resolution approving the request of the New Providence Mental Health Advocacy and Education Committee to participate in the street fair. This is carrying over from last year. They had applied and paid, and it got rained out, so we're gonna try it again this year.
Okay. Engineering, Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2024-267, resolution authorizing application for Treatment Works Approval Department for Redwood ERC New Providence 3 LLC, Block 320, Lot 17, dot oh one, and 18 oh one. This is the resolution approving Treatment Works Approval Application for the Engineers' Report for Sanitary Improvements Associated with Construction at Landville. Resolution 2024-268, resolution accepting a proposal of Colliers Engineering Design for Professional Engineering Services Regarding Barred Field Survey. So this is the accepting proposal from Colliers to complete a boundary survey so that the gate or the movable barrier can be placed on the property line, essentially closing the area off to, through traffic. Resolution 2024-269, resolution approving progress payment number two for Portofino Builders in an amount of $104,116.67 for the NJDOT FY23 Maple Street Improvements Project. So this is payment number two on the Maple Street project. It's about 45% of the work, we're still waiting for a paving timeline. Resolution 2024-270, resolution authorizing contract for municipal management software from Spatial Data Logic, approving the annual contract with Spatial Data that is used for building department, for fire prevention, planning, zoning boards, engineering, property maintenance, and tax assessment office.
City Finance, Aiden.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2024-271 is a resolution authorizing payment of the attached bills payable list in the amount of $622,232.94, and significant items include Portofino Builders for the amount of $251,254, and that's the first and the second payment, the first payment we approved in our last meeting. Suburban disposal for the amount of $45,333 for August garbage. Phobionics Imaging Technologies in the amount of $38,258 for document scanning, and Rainier Air Conditioning in the amount of $23,868 for the Municipal Center air conditioner. Resolution 2024-272 is, actually, and 273, they're both resolutions providing for the insertion of any special item of revenue in the 2024 budget pursuant of NJSA 40A:4-87, Chapter 159, PL 1948. The first one, 272, is for the Community Energy Plan Grant, and this is accepting a $10,000 grant from the Board of Public Utilities for the development of a community energy plan, which will align the goals and strategies in New Jersey's Energy Master Plan. And Resolution 272 is for another National Opioid Settlement 2024, resolution to add $1,294 and change to the 2024 budget as part of the opioid settlement. Resolution 2024-274 is Murray Hill Hospitality LLC versus Borough of New Providence, Block 220, Lot 20, 535 Central Avenue, Block 220, Lot 20, 535 Central Avenue, Unit C0001, Block 220, Lot 20, 535 Central Avenue, Unit C0002, dockets and several different docket numbers, and this is a resolution approving the tax appeal settlement with Murray Hill Hospitality for the tax appeals from 2020 through 2024. As we all know, that was the height of COVID, so that's where that generates from.
Okay. Resolution 275 is a resolution appointing Linda Eurea and Lisa Sinney as crossing guards. 276 is a resolution approving purchase of bulletproof vests for officers Wilson, Collino, Gutierrez, Pavlik, Miller, Gelamini, Cameron Volano, and Burton using grant funds. Okay, and that's it for that. We have some discussion items, and I just want to bring up a couple things coming up. The Police Department Bee's Steak Dinner is Saturday at the Packard Hall. The car show is October 5th, and the ring date is October 6th. Okay, and that'll be at the Community Pool. The Fire Department's have an open house on October 12th, and obviously, that will be at the Firehouse.
It was a lot of fun last year.
We had some ribbon cuttings. Actually, Zubini Byaly moved from 309 South Street to 200 South Street, and we wished them the best at their new location Thursday night. Yoga Six over in the shopping center, we're gonna do a ribbon cutting, and Cafe Luna on October 6th is going to have a ribbon cutting. On the 5th, October 5th, the Prosecutor's Office is working with the Police Department's for gun takeback. They request anybody that has a firearm can bring the weapon here in New Providence to the American Legion between 10 and 1:00, and there will be no questions asked. And that's going out throughout the county. Other towns like Summit, Berkeley Heights are gonna be open at different locations from, I think, 9:00 to 4:00. All right? Before I forget, I, you know, I should have done this in the beginning, is that Maxine Hirsch, a former councilman, councilwoman, passed away. She served on council for 20 years, and I was very lucky to serve with her for about, I guess, eight of those. She was probably one of the most compassionate people I ever meet. She was, she was the heart and soul, I always said, of the council, and just a terrific person, always, she was a teacher in Summit. Her and her husband, Stuart, always did a lot of community service in town here. I know Stuart himself served on the Board of Adjustment for a number, number of years. So we're going to lower the flights a half mass on the 27th, right? And, you know, let's have a moment of silence for her, and God bless her and her family. Thank you very much. The other thing I wanted to bring up, you know, I do read social media, I don't get on there because I, I don't believe in responding to a lot of things that go on there. Been mayor for 19 years. I've lived in this town all my life, 70 years. I've never seen it so divisive as I've seen it present day. And I don't know if it's because the country is divided, state, or whatever, but it never seemed to infiltrate New Providence. We're all neighbors here, but what I'm reading, like things about the pool bridge, spent a lot of time determining the status of the community pool bridge. That bridge was put in probably when the pool was built, back in the 60s. We've had some tough, tough hurricanes, rainstorms. The bridge needs to be replaced. Now, over the, over the past year or so, you know, we've been very concerned about public safety, about pedestrian safety, about kids getting off in school, we've changed our traffic patterns. I know it's an inconvenience. We've asked a lot of people, please drop your kids off at the pool and walk to the high school, and I have to say, most people have complied. Now, from what I'm reading on social media, does anybody really think that we don't do our due diligence and have enough common sense to know if we take that bridge down, that we have to put a pedestrian, pedestrian bridge in temporarily? It's common sense, and I see people getting worked up over it. It's ridiculous, and why people would buy into what goes on in this social media, which is total misinformation, is beyond me, just beyond me. And there's other things that, that come up, like the high-density housing. Like it or not, this was mandated by the New Jersey Supreme Court. We don't have a choice. There's no choice. There's neighboring towns that have tried to fight this, have spent $1 million in legal fees, and lost. And then, on top of that, they get fined. On top of that, that wasn't good enough, they're going for another bite at the apple. It makes no sense. Listen, the only way that this high-density housing is gonna change is by the legislature, and believe me, I am down there. Every time the subject gets brought up, it is tabled, there is no discussion. It could also be if they put up a public referendum, but that's not gonna happen. So, I mean, for them to start pointing fingers and this and that is unbelievable to me. Sidewalks, we got grants for sidewalks. We had a listening session the other night. It was a listening session, see how the neighborhoods thought about it. There was nothing etched in stone yet. There was a proposal by an engineering company. That's all it was. We're gonna take all those comments, listen to, you know, take them under consideration, listen to Police Department, listen to our professionals, but for people to think that we don't listen to the constituents in this town, believe me, I know some of the streets where sidewalks, they're saying they need them, the streets are narrow, and there are big, old trees there. Guess what? This council will do the right thing. We understand, but, you know, for us to make decisions like this, we want public input, and we got it the other night. That's all it was. So for people to say, oh, we're gonna force this down people's throats, this, that, it's not true. None of it's true. If people have a question, and I, just, you can go to any one of us, you can call Borough Hall, you can go to our website if you can't find the information, that's where the accurate information is. I know it's silly season, and I know it's election time, and it happens every year. I want to make sure that people understand that, you know, dividing this town over issues that aren't even issues shouldn't be happening. This is a great town. It's always been a great town, and we've been a model for a lot of towns throughout the state. We are very well-known to be a stable community, and I hate to see it, and I see it coming is from rhetoric and what I'm seeing, and I just thought, I need to say something, and maybe it'll put an end to it, because all our people here, not only council, but our administration, all our employees, work very hard, very hard, to keep stability in this town and keep this town a great town that it is. And I think I've said enough. Thank you all. Diane.
Thank you, Mayor. And one of the rumors was that there were no council people at that Safer to School meeting, but there were three, actually.
Yes, there was.
So, just to set the record straight. And speaking about stable communities, we had information from, a press release from Fitch Ratings, we were approved for a AAA bond rating, and Jim Testa was here earlier, thank you, speaking of borough employees going above and beyond and doing such a great job of what they do. He worked really hard, the rating agencies have changed some of their metrics, so he did a great job to help us with that. Word of health, I updated everybody, historical society, cemetery tours this weekend, also the book festival was this weekend, this past weekend, it was really great, had a nice time. We had quarterly meeting for the Downtown Improvement District, which we all know is a standalone entity, they're always looking for ways to beautify the downtown and make it a desirable destination to both gather and shop, and they're currently working with both the Beautification Committee and the Garden Club to enhance the downtown, create more green spaces, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that's it. And happy birthday, Al.
Thank you. Mike.
Okay, so I want to thank you both for staying for our meeting. You get to see how government works, very exciting stuff, right?
They're still awake.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna say something, because every...
Where have you been for me? I've been here for five years.
I was gonna say something, because I usually get pretty emotional when I talk about this, but as somebody who grew up, coming home from school and having a bread and ketchup in the refrigerator, and splitting ketchup sandwiches with my family, relying on the town to donate food and seeing, getting a box of Thanksgiving dinner so we can have a normal Thanksgiving every year. You know, one of the things that kind of inspired me to be here, right, to give back to the community and continue to serve others. So I just wanted to say that I think what you do is remarkable, and I really, truly appreciate it from the bottom of my heart, so thank you. So, I get that emotional part out of the way. Just wanted to talk about the senior bus, we had, we had passed a resolution to allow for Recreation to apply for a grant. Bless you. It turns out that that grant is only, there's only 10 grants available, so it's a very small chance that we get it. So Allison, being who she is, always thinking ahead, three steps, you know, she just threw at us to consider, thinking about, if we don't get the grant, what's the next steps, right? So we got this big, large bus, and it's too big, really, for what we need it for, so touring around the idea of, bless you, you know, potentially selling the bus and buying a smaller bus, right, maybe a school bus or sometime a conversion van or something in that effect. So just wanted to throw that out there so you guys are aware. We're still in running, obviously, for the grant, and hope we do get it, but if not, that's an option that we're looking into. I just want to mention the Recreation Winter Basketball Programs are starting, registration's open now, this is for all grades, one through eight, so boys and girls, go to the website, Borough website for information, and you can register online at our Community Pass. Last thing, I just, pickleball, I know Bernadette can probably give a good update on where we're at, but I did just want to mention that they did start paving the walking paths, so that's all I had.
Okay. Beep.
Good, nothing further, Mayor.
Okay. Beep.
Operations normal. Councilwoman McNamara's gonna cover on mental health.
Thank you. Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for being a frequent flyer.
[laughter]
Just wanted an update on...
Well, you got to thank everybody else. You got to thank John and our...
Yeah, John and all of our professionals.
Yeah. Trust is...
So the precinct fest, yet another success, hundreds and hundreds of cars, great. Aiden as well, yes, he's gonna be a councilman very soon.
[laughter]
Terrific. Would you happen to know the number of cars? I know you were counting. How much?
492.
492 cars.
That was just from 9:30, and so we missed a whole hour of the, I would guess, over 600 cars.
And not just serving New Providence, probably Chatham, Summit, and Berkeley Heights, so thank you for your help with that as well. Operations normal, but I did want to mention to our Jewish community, next Wednesday is Rosh Hashanah. That's year, for people that are counting, that's year 5785. This year, between Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur is a somber one, being that October 7th anniversary, so yeah, that'll be a tough one, but Yom Kippur is on, on the 11th, so we typically say have a good fast, easy fast, but just wanted to wish our, Happy New Year to our Jewish community.
Thank you. Lisa.
Thank you. So, thank you to Recreation and everybody that made that walking path possible, because it is a pleasure to walk on. It is my normal MO to walk that path almost every day, and it is really nice, so awesome. So Mental Health Committee did meet this, last week, and they did not get the grant that they applied for, so they're kind of reconfiguring how to, what to do and how to do it. So they are still looking at programs and events, but this time really looking at collaborations with other existing foundations and other communities to get things done. But basically, what they're trying to do is, or what they're gonna be focusing on is May and painting the town green, working with our neighboring communities to get that is May and painting the town green, working with our neighboring communities to get that rolling. And they're pretty excited. So, they're gonna be at the street fair. They are still, you know, providing resources and giving, you know, information concerning the mental health, and they really do want to get their message out to the community. So, visit them at the street fair. The library board also met last week, and that is a lot going on. Oh, is that the library? A lot going on. If you haven't been to the library in a while, go check it out. It is very different. They have, Stacy has done such a, Stacy and her staff, really, it's not just Stacy, she has a wonderful staff, have really transformed that library. They took the strategic plan that we did a year ago and really have put it to work. So, it's amazing. Now, they have work pods, so if you're looking for a quiet space to read or work, there's work pods set up in there that look awesome. They got a book dragon. I don't know if you saw it. So, they, right as you're going into the library, it's a little steel book dragon statue. And it has garnered so much attention. It's all over social media. People like to sit with it, take their pictures with it. They post pictures with, we even have Nassim from TPW in a picture with the book dragon. So, kudos to them for that. They're always finding ways to-
Which is scary.
You know. Yeah. Yeah, they're always finding, but they're always finding ways to generate, you know, excitement about the library.
Maybe we should have coffee with councilmen.
I mentioned once before, the Friends of the Library, their fundraiser is November sixteenth. It's the murder mystery. It is gonna be at the Paka Club, and the theme is Tinsel Town, so that will be fun. The summer reading program was a huge success. They, in the month of July, they had foot traffic of over eight thousand people into the library for the summer reading program. Storytime numbers reaching over twenty-five-hundred. That's crazy. They've never had numbers like that before. They had over a hundred and thirteen volunteers. That really helps make that program a success. And they're always looking for teen volunteers. So, this is the sixth year that that program has been in existence. So, if you know any high school or middle school students that are looking for some type of volunteer activity, you know, they need them for shelving books and for, you know, helping with the storytimes and helping with the kids. So, that's a great thing as well. The last thing for the library is, I mentioned several times that they were looking to do a renovation project. We had okayed the DEP to go in there and do the survey. They got the survey back, and what they were worried about was the wetland buffer. So, they were worried about that. So, it came in that instead of the fifty-feet buffer that they were hoping for, it's a hundred and fifty feet, but it's not because of wetlands. It's because of the Indiana bat. So, this is what the DEP said. It's an endangered species who might find that area suitable for habitat. So, there's no Indiana bats there now, but maybe there could be. So, interesting on that. So, they're kinda going back to the drawing board a little bit and having to reconfigure. There are setbacks for that. So, interesting.
Do we have a bat in New Jersey at all?
I have no idea. There's none, there's- The Indiana bat might like it, so we have to maybe make-
Can I just add, you still have chat with the mayor on the fourth?
Yeah.
October fourth?
Councilwoman McKnight, I have to say, I think you do a wonderful job on your library updates. I, I'm a heavy library user myself, and I appreciate your passion and your report, so thank you.
It is like such a great space. So, I really want people to go in there. They really do. And Stacy and her staff do such a good job of going out to the community and the residents and, you know, drumming up excitement for it and getting people to get library cards.
Great job.
Yeah, she was at the-
The book festival.
And they had a nice table.
Yeah. We had a long talk about the traffic and everything else, so. Bernadette, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few project updates. South Street water main replacement. CRJ continues to flush the water main, but the samples continue to fail. This is holding up the tie-ins at Gale's Drive due to the samples, and they're hoping to finish this project up in the next week or so, but it is contingent upon the water samples. If you're down South Street in the morning, I've asked several times why it looks like we have a water main break at different places. It's because they're flushing at night constantly, and it's leaving residue in the morning. So, they're working on it, but I don't know, I don't know why they can't get those, that one section to actually pass the water samples. Not sure what's going on there.
I saw that one in OLP's lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, covered.
Yeah. To Sayik Street Bridge, I spoke with the county engineer today to get a sense of where that project is. Currently, they're waiting on formal engineering designs from JC P and L. Ironically, the school district is also waiting for such plans from the engineering department. So, JC P and L needs to spell out for the contractor how they're going to de-energize the overhead power lines before we can start to deconstruct the bridge, I guess due to the cranes and stuff that will be in and out. County does continue to work with JC P and L and Neglia, who is the construction, the construction company, to put a schedule together. The good news is, is that the beams are in construction, so they're being fabricated, and we're not losing any time because of that. So, the bridge remains open while that's happening. So, that's at least, you know, shining light at the end of the tunnel.
That's a blessing.
Exactly. Maple Street paving, the contractor has seen the light. Our engineers were on site during morning drop-off last week, and he agrees that he cannot pave during school hours. For those on council, you're well-aware that he had said for us to pave after school hours would cost the borough an additional fifty-seven thousand dollars, which really just isn't acceptable. And that's due to having to open the asphalt plants outside of normal business hours. He's now since given us a tentative paving date of November seventh and eighth. So, we've compressed four days of milling and paving down to two. I'm not sure how that works, but that's what he says. The only bad thing about November seventh and eighth, school is closed, which is great, but we're really pushing it weather-wise. I have made it perfectly clear to both our engineer and them that they may not leave the road just milled. So, if they're not gonna be able to pave, they cannot mill, in which case they would do the paving over spring break when school is closed in the spring. I think you guys are aware that the asphalt plants do close at a certain time due to the weather, so we're really pushing it out in November. And last but not least, Allison and I met with Dakota Excavating today at the pickleball court site. They have removed all of the paving from the tennis court shelter house around to OLP. Much to their surprise, when they were digging up, they found a concrete block underneath two layers of asphalt. So, there is a giant mound of debris where the actual pickleball courts will be. They let us know that they should be done paving that area, the walking path area by the end of this week, and all of that debris will leave, and then they'll start working on the courts. That's all I have.
Nice.
Thank you. John Swanauer, you're here. Everybody's asked me about the cemetery tours.
Yes.
When are they?
We have one coming up this Saturday, and then we have two coming up for the Four Century festivals that are going on in the county. And we're gonna do two tours, back-to-back, one at one-thirty and one at two-thirty. So, the last tour we had, we got eighteen people, which was wonderful, and we've been averaging about five, maybe six people per tour last spring. So, things are ramping up, and yeah, so it's exciting. And I'm always trying to add something to the tour, so I'm constantly doing research and learning more about the mulverts and the crane family and things like that. So, yeah.
So, this weekend, ten-five also, and then ten-twenty? Is it three more times?
Correct, yeah.
And ten-twenty is the one at one-thirty and two-thirty?
That's correct.
Now, do people have to preregister or just show up at the church?
Yeah, we ask people to just send an email to npcemitertours@gmail.com to register. But, you know, I never turn anyone away, and we agree with the church that we'd limit it to twenty persons per tour, and we never really get there, so it's all good. If, you know, people show up, I never turn anyone away or anything.
Yeah, right.
I'm just glad they show up and learn about the great history we have here in the town. I think very few people know how much history there really is in this small town.
I was surprised. I took it last year, and I mean, I know a lot of history here, but, I mean, some of this stuff was unbelievable. So, thank you, thank you for doing that.
Of course, yeah. My pleasure.
Very educational.
It's my passion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay. Alan, you're up.
Bless you.
Alan Swanson, forty-seven Overhill Road. Actually, wasn't intending to speak tonight.
Oh, that's okay.
You're just wishing Al a happy birthday?
But now I'm going to. I don't think I'm gonna say anything negative. Well, I usually don't say much of anything negative about you guys. I did wanna comment on the free cycle, which I think is really a great thing, and I actually brought over three loads there, and people were giving me a hard time, like it was, you know, I was just too, so, because I, but I got a lot of cleaning out of some things. And the reason I bring it up is, it would really be great if there, if there was a way to actually have a little more of a frequent activity like that, because, you know, one of the, one of the main things from an environmental standpoint is the reuse aspect. You know, it's like, it's really good, some of the thrift stores that are around and things like that, because that's reusing all of these materials and the equipment and stuff is really a great thing. So, it would be great if you could figure out a way to do that more often. I mean, I know Summit's got, they have a rather nice facility for that. I know you're really, probably not gonna go that far. I wanted to comment on the sidewalks. This is just another little environmental comment. It would really be great if you, I ride around a lot, and I travel around on the paths and things, and it would be really great if you worked on a couple of the paths around that, especially if there was something from east to west, you know, it's marked, you know, that we've, that there's a path along, along the Salt Brook over there between Lyons Park and over towards Livingston. It would be great if that was fixed up or something. It's a, I was just over there the other day, and I know it's a problem, because it runs right next to the Salt Brook, and when you get the floods there, I noticed that there was a significant amount of the property was gone.
There's a couple pieces in there that are private property.
Yeah, I understand that, too, yeah, because it does butt right up on the private property. And then, I know it's a problem from Livingston over to South Street, you know, but there's a sidewalk on Marion, so you could go over. Anyway, so that's just a little comment. The other thing that I wanted to mention was, you know, it, we're a great town. It's true. But it's not perfect. I can tell you that from a, personally, outside of the social media, there are people in this town who, I don't know who they are, but there are people who, from time to time, perhaps don't like some things that I say, or somebody I might support with a sign or something in my yard, because I have, since 2016, periodically received hate mail. And the only reason I bring it up is that the last one that I received was about four days ago. It's not threatening. I also receive, I also receive dog waste if I put out a sign that somebody doesn't like. Somebody in my neighborhood likes to either allow their dog or deposit their dog's waste near the sign if I put it up, if they don't like it. I think I just bring it up is that, you know, we're, people are, there are some real idiots out there, and I don't know how we would get away from them, so that I, I know that, you know, I don't post very much on social media myself, because I don't, I don't really care for it. And most of the time, if I post anything, it's a correction of something that somebody put out there that's stupid, like you, like you say. Well, you didn't say that, but I say.
But it's accurate.
I definitely believe that facts matter, so it's, that's-
And I appreciate that. My point is, is that we're all neighbors, and at the end of the day, we should all be getting along with each other. And you know what? If you're gonna, if you're gonna put something out there, just make sure it's accurate. Do your homework. If somebody has a problem with something that we did, I, you know, it's free speech, anybody has-
They should show up here like I do, frankly. I've never felt like that you were particularly negative to things.
No, it's just misinformation breeds contempt. It really does. And, you know, it, all this job is hard enough without, you know, we strive so hard to do the right thing and come up to the right, right answer. Sometimes we're wrong, and I've got, we've made decisions, and I've come right up, information we had at the time, you know, and we thought it was the right decision, reversed course, but, you know, it's the rhetoric that gets me.
Well, I've never said you were wrong.
No, I, I, no, and I'm not, I'm not-
No, I'm just-
I'm not saying this about you.
That's a joke.
I'm just saying, you, listen, we know who the culprits are. You can read the social media, and it's just a shame you've come this far. It really is. And, you know, I know you and I don't agree on everything, but it's not that I don't respect you. I mean, you know, everybody has different, different values and different, you know, ideas, and that's fine. There's nothing wrong with that. That's America. But, you know, the way I see this stuff going on, I've never seen it before here. And it's starting to really hit home, that, you know, this nice place, nice people thing, people aren't really getting into it, you know? So, we've always been known as a very, you know, stable community, and I just, I just don't wanna see it ruin.
Let me say one, one thing that I had, no intention, oh, go ahead.
Before you, I just wanna go back to the free cycle, your comment about having it more often. For the Sustainability Committee, it's like our number-one event for the year, apart from the Green Fair. And the hours, it's all volunteer run, which is terrific. And Aiden, as we mentioned earlier, I don't know how many hours you put in to coordinate it, so having a multiple one is definitely, you might have to get on the payroll.
If you want me to speak to it, it takes about six months to plan this person every day. So, if you were gonna start planning, say, have it in March, you have to start planning it like the day that Free Cycle ends.
And not till-
But the one thing I will say, Alan-
Get to work.
I will say to Alan, one idea we're floating around with the Sustainability Committee, to your point about having these things more often, is seeing that Summit, Chatham, they have a community-wide garage sale, where we would advertise or have families bundle together garage sales where they can actually donate the money to a good charity or a good cause, but give a, find a way to get rid of their junk, and where the borough, where Sustainability Committee would advertise all the locations, maybe have an app. So, we are looking into other ways of finding ways, getting things out of the waste stream as our goal.
There's also a lot of other activities in, in our community and surrounding communities. The Athletic Boosters has a clothing drive. The Presbyterian Church has their rummage sale every spring. There's a lot of different, Long Hill, you know, has a linen, whatever. So, there's so many of them to not double.
The more, the better.
Yeah.
You know, no doubt about that.
Oh, yeah, great.
That's, that's all. I just, I'm just trying to reinforce that this is really a good thing. Let me say, you know, in this day and age, and what we are experiencing right now in terms of the media and the things that are out there, and the way that people are so fast to, to be negative and everything, I have, you know, I'm a little older than- have, you know, I'm a little older than, than most of you, not that much, but a little bit, but I'm a product of the sixties. I went to high school and college from nineteen sixty-two to nineteen seventy when I graduated undergraduate school. You can't get much more in the sixties than that in terms of that age group. And, and something that I've said to people from time to time when talking about the issue of the misinformation and honestly, the kind of the hate that's out there and the hate speech that goes on, and I've said to people that, you know, the sixties were a tumultuous time, and, I mean, it was, and there were a number of tragedies that occurred in nineteen sixty. But overall, from my experience, I really believe that, that kind of the hate, I mean, I didn't, I didn't experience the, kind of the hate that people have now.
I agree.
You know, that, that, I mean, it was really a controversial time. There were, you know, it really, it really was. And then in nineteen seventy, I was drafted. Anyway, but, but I just, I just feel like now, just so many things that you see that are just, from my experience, I say, you know, why, why are people like that? Why, I don't know.
I think a lot of it has to do with social media. It gins people up, and, you know, we didn't have that back in the sixties or seventies, and I think that's, that's what it is. Social media is a great thing if it's used properly, and, you know, but, you know, it's the way it is. It just concerns me that I see it moving into our community like it is.
Yeah, well, that's why I bring up that it's, you know, that people sending me hate mail. I just, it's kind of like, I mean, it's not threatening, so that, you know, I did have the police involved at one point, but that was a little different occurrence with regard to that kind of thing. But, but I get it, and I think that that's exactly what it is, that because the things that I receive are usually social media-made-up things about, you know, the last one I got was supposedly pictures of Kamala Harris as a prostitute. Well, of course, it's totally fake. It's totally made up, and some, somebody out there, what's so strange to me is that the idea that there would be somebody sitting in their house, taking time to, to copy and, and put together and address it, to me, a piece of mail, to send me something like that. I just, it just, it's kind of mind-boggling as to what is in your head that makes you think that, oh, I'm going to get him, I'm going to send him this picture. It's just, it's just very strange. Tonight, you were pretty good about your, about speaking with the microphones. I didn't have much trouble tonight. So always keep that in mind. Thank you.
All right. Let's go to, this is items one through twelve. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Go call, please.
Ms. Belisca?
Aye.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Aye.
Mr. DeSarno?
Aye.
Mrs. Drapright?
Yes.
Mr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight?
Yes.
Okay, everybody. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.